I go there's a lady with a permit office. They've addressed it, they write letters, but nobody enforces anything. So here we are with hurricane season a week away. I have the same problem. That FEMA trailer is sitting there, that trailer across the street, our houses are elevated. Just in case of a storm, as Ike got us, those things get to rolling, they knock your islands out underneath your house. I just want to know who's in charge of enforcing. You can write a letter, that's fine, but when them people just ignore the letter and throw them in the trash or whatever they do with them. I think somebody needs to go down there, take a drive around the island, see what's going on. Based on Bayside Drive at the end of the cul-de-sac, everything's pretty obvious. The addresses, I can give them, but they're kind of immaterial, it's right at the end of the cul-de-sac. But I just am hoping somebody will address this problem that we've got down there. I call them code violations. I don't know if it's a code or not. Alls I know is those things are got wheels off of them, they can't be moved in a timely manner if a storm's coming in. And I think it should be addressed and it should be enforced. If they're told to move them, they don't, there should be some repercussions. That's all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Have any other public comments? We will, Mr. Mayor Beth ready for? Not ready yet, okay. Okay, we're gonna go on to 1.4. Discussing Considered Presentation from Gabriel White to Consider an Eagle Scout Project, American Flag Retirement Boxes for Chambers County, with boxes being provided for the West, Mid, and East Counties.
I have papers for y'all.
Okay.
Good morning, I am Gabriel White from Troop 105 in Mont Belvue, Texas, and I'm here to propose my Eagle Scout project. Several years ago, me and my father were going to the dumpster to throw away some garbage, and there was a man about to throw an American flag into the dumpster. We jumped out, ran and grabbed the flag and took it to our scout house where we can keep it safely until it can be retired properly. And on the way home, we realized, most people don't realize that there is a proper way to retire the American flag. So this led us to the idea that we want to build flag retirement boxes for the county and place them in different areas where they can be accessed by the public and they can deposit their flags, where we could come pick them up at a time and they could be deposited. We would attain some sort of old mailbox or something that looks nice and old industrial drop box, paint it to look patriotic, make sure it's clear that it is not a mailbox, and secure it to a concrete base. This here is some of the examples of what we would want it to look like. We lean towards the one on the left more because it looks less like a mailbox, so people would be less likely to drop mail in it. These are two of the base boxes we've been looking at. One on the left, once again, because it looks less like a mailbox. And some of the specifications for that box are, it's forty-nine inches high, twenty inches wide, twenty-six inches deep, made of fourteen gauge steel, roughly four, nine hundred dollars apiece. The company I looked at would give discounts the more you ordered. And they weigh about a hundred and sixty pounds each. My timeline, my timeline depends on how long fundraising takes, how long it takes for approval from the Boy Scout community, and how many workers I can get from my troop. But if this is approved, the few questions I have is, I was planning on making glee, where would you want me to put them in the county? Is there a concrete base for me, or would I need to pour one? And are there any questions you all have for me?
Does anybody have any questions?
Right about there. I'd just like to say, I really truly appreciate you bringing this project to the county. You know, I personally fly a flag all the time, and I've actually got probably about three or four in my home now that need to be properly retired. I think it's a great project and I'll be happy to work with you or whoever we can get you with our maintenance or, you know, our Roden Bridge, help get the concrete foundations in and pick locations, but I'm excited about it. And also, I like your dedication. I've got a son that's an Eagle Scout from Troop 105, spent a lot of time in it myself several years ago, and thank you for all you're doing.
Anybody have any suggestions where we might put these boxes?
I think we really need to think about it a little bit, and maybe, uh...
See, obviously.
When I spoke to Judge Sylvia about this earlier, he mentioned putting it in the Three Corners Arc of the county.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, on the west side, Mont Belvue, there, the west annex maybe be a good place.
For sure.
And then, you know, I don't, I don't worry about central, maybe somewhere in Anawak or something, and then, we need stuff.
Find those locations.
I'll move for approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Combs, seconded by Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Y'all give me a contact number before y'all leave, please?
Okay, we're gonna go to 1.6. Discussing, discussing, discussing consider paying six hundred and three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars to the Texas Association of Counties for property insurance covers from July twenty twenty-one to July twenty twenty-two. Presentation by Tech George.
You can go ahead.
Okay, okay, yeah, he's, he's talking. Good morning, my name's Lisa McKegg, I'm your risk management consultant with the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool. Thank you for having us this morning. So I'm here to talk about your property renewal, and as you all know, it still remains to be a hard market for property coverage in the state of Texas and probably throughout the United States. We continue to see, you know, the hurricanes, windstorms, they are anticipating, as you all probably know and are aware, that this year will remain to be a difficult year as well with our, especially with our tier one counties, which Chambers County is part of. So for your renewal, George has probably shared this with you, there's been an increase in your values of five percent, and the remaining sixteen percent is your property renewal, which brings it to a total of twenty-one percent. I did have our underwriters run an analysis, a deductible analysis, so that we could look at that, as you're aware, your deductible is increasing to five thousand this year. For members that are similar to your size, not taking into consideration that they are tier one members or tier two, ten thousand dollar deductible is what we see for members your size. That does not say that you have to increase to that, but that just gives you an ideal for the deductible.
Thank you, Lisa. And Commissioners, I'd like y'all to know that most of the time, probably ninety-nine percent of our claims, we wait to get at least a five thousand dollar claim. We do very little at a thousand, it just doesn't pay off to get a claim for that. And to point out, that Tech has been very supportive of this county in my tenure as the risk manager. Twenty seventeen Harvey, we had thirty buildings damaged. We had, we received one point five million dollars from Tech and the vendor charged about one point four, five. So we were well taken care of. Again, when Amelda hit, we had twenty-four buildings hit, some of those were re-hit twice. We received nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Tech and the vendor hit us for about nine twenty-eight. Again, we're being well, very well taken care of by Tech. So the increase is, is across this state, we're on the coast, we're a coastal county. Trying to find somebody to insure us is hard enough, but we have a great partner with Tech and I want y'all to know that. And also, the going up to five thousand really and truly does not affect us because we did very few at a thousand dollars. It just didn't make good common sense to do that, to do a claim for that amount.
Yeah, outside the pool, we're seeing, we're, we're being told in the private sector, they're seeing increases in forty percent, businesses are. So for the pool, we picked up a lot of new property coverage over the past two years.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
My only question is about the, about the budgeting of it, and I assume we've gotten there because this shows we're sixty-four thousand dollars under budget. Can you see if... Go ahead, let Commissioner Hammond answer your question.
Does a ten thousand deductible change any, does it change the premium?
It would bring the premium down. Unfortunately, I don't have that one right in front of me for the ten thousand. I will tell you that it's probably not significant enough that you would want to make that change because if you have a claim, one claim, you're gonna be back hole where you are right now. So you would have to look at going like more to a fifteen to twenty-five thousand to see the savings.
Yeah, I'm sure he's looked at it. He's coming in.
I'm good, I'm looking at Heather, she's got me sidetracked. I haven't seen people in so long, I'm sorry, I don't know how to act in public.
No, y'all have been very good, yes, and I know when I came on the court, I spoke with George about the sheriff's office, going to a full coverage on our vehicles and everything like that.
On New Year's New Year, yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, that has been...
Sorry, paid off.
It's totally paid off, I mean, so...
Well, we appreciate you all being our partner, we love working with Chambers County.
We appreciate working with you all.
Jimmy, I'd like to say something. I served on the risk pool boards for many years for Tech, and I can't say enough about, about these individuals. They have been here in the worst of times, traveled to get to our county in particular after Harvey, and kind of set up home base here, kind of distribute to southeast Texas after Ike, they were boots on the ground as well, so I can't say enough about them.
I mean, Aaron, Commissioner Combs had a question for you.
Yeah, it's just concerning the budget on the insurance. Looks like we have seven hundred thousand budgeted, so that puts sixty-four thousand dollars over. And I just wanted to check, see if we got funds available for...
Yes, sir, I have a little get that fund and just do a transfer to cover, be extra cost on it, because I wasn't aware, you know, I didn't realize it was gonna happen, so I have to correct it. What's the fund?
Okay. Will we entertain a motion?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Combs, seconded by Commissioner Tice. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank y'all very much. All righty. Going to go to Roden Bridge, 3.1, Discussing Consider Update on 1409 Project, Corey.
Thank you, Court. So, just an update, I was asking about ACP out there on the project. Looks like it's delayed till maybe tomorrow, definitely by, till Thursday, till they get started out there on the asphalt on the roadway. So, as y'all know, it's drifted from April into, I think the last was May seventeenth they were gonna start, and rain has just been an issue in a wet spring. So there's getting started, as I was telling Commissioner Hammond yesterday, that, you know, it's the same contractor that being used on other projects in the area. And TechDOT's pulling rank on us and their projects are coming first, we're getting pushed to the back, but it is coming. So hopefully they'll, they'll be starting Thursday, we'll be getting our base down. We're, we really need it because we're already having issues since they put the prime out there, pavement, the rock, the base, looks black. That's all people see, and to them, it looks like it, you know, we're, oh, there it's opening, but if not, and so, but we're having more issues with people moving barricades and stuff like that, so that is a potential safety issue, so it's just a lot of maintenance. So we need to get the surface out there, get it striped and get it open. So, just until that time, we do have, you know, the interim period where we have to get TechDOT involved for a punch list and get their approval prior to move forward. Now, we do have where they're gonna accept, at, at some point, they're gonna accept what originally was the south section of the job alone, we're gonna tie in the north jug handles to that as well because it kind of isolates the future bridge project that Angel Brothers bid. And so, anyway, they'll kind of split the project in two. Anyway, so that's it on the hot mix. I will tell you also, I got a response back from TechDOT day before yesterday that they have concurred with Angel Brothers as being our low bidder, lowest responsive bidder, and we are able to go ahead and proceed with the contract for that project. So that is good. We have a projection to get started right around the first of July, and that is a fourteen month estimated project schedule. So hopefully, you know, this current project was projected to be, the roadway portion was projected to be done in the spring of twenty-two. We're ahead of schedule about six months, so hopefully the bridge works out the same way and we can complete it prior to school starting twenty-two.
Should be great.
Well, it's, I mean, it just depends, because bridge work is not overall susceptible to, to weather, as we saw with the I-ten bridge, right? And so, you know, the, the only issue is getting your, your embankment set for your header slopes, you know, once you get that done, but with having a paved road all the way around it, it is gonna help, so, you know, they can get to it. There'll be other things that hopefully they can work on while it's, while it's wet or raining. It's gonna be a little bit more critical because it is crossing I-ten, so, you know, you can't directly work when it's, you know, really wet, but it, it is a little more forgiving in wet weather. So hopefully we can, we can move forward and get that thing knocked out twelve months, so.
Well, they asphalt as fast as they did twenty-three fifty-four, they were four days and they were done.
Yeah, once you start getting to the surface work, I mean, it's, that's the thing, is it kills you when you're, when you're playing in the dirt or the mud, and, and when you get to the top, all you need is a, you know, asphalt dries out so quickly, you just need some good tack on it, clean surface, and then get it laid.
Are we going to chip steel them or is it just gonna be asphalt?
On... It'll just be an asphalt, so it's the prime, it has a base course and a surface course of asphalt, ACP. Hot mix, different terms, but...
So do they do any time between the prime and the first layer? Like a tack or anything, or is that prime and...
You know, it's not, I mean, really, you've got a layer where it's, it's, it's gonna attach there. Really, the tack is most important between the base course and the surface course. You know, generally that rock is gonna help, if it's set right, it's gonna, it's gonna add some friction there for your base course.
Okay. And, to talk on, you need to get yours done?
That's all, I just want to skip to ten point one for Tech.
Or Tank?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. That's okay.
We'll go ahead and get that done. Ten point one, Discussing Consider Recognizing Chambers County for Receiving the 2020 Excellence Safety Award for the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool, Tac, TAC, RMP.
Good morning, gentlemen, members of court, thanks for having us. My name is Joe Shevcek, I'm your risk control consultant. Some of you guys may have sat through some of my safety trainings, it's been a little over a year since, since we've had the privilege of coming out, but I'm here with good news, Lisa brings the bad news, I bring the good news. So we're here to recognize Chamber County, Chambers County with the 2020 Excellence in Safety Award. Now, this award is tied to your workers' compensation program, and Chambers County met the requirements for this award with their loss ratio being below a certain percentage, having certain policies in place, and completing some, some training objectives. It is the, the highest level safety award that Tac offers, and Chambers County was one of eleven counties receiving the award this year, so congratulations on that. And then, on top of that, I'd also like to add, if, if you guys wanted to do like a photo op, but before we get to that, just a reminder about the Tac Safety Equipment Program. Chambers County was awarded three thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents through that Granger store, the safety equipment store, to buy safety supplies, as well as that same dollar amount going to the sheriff's office for buying safety equipment for, for the, for the deputies as well, so with that safe... I, I think we're going on the fourth year?
I think we are.
Yes. So, just, just another return and a show of appreciation and gratitude in recognizing our members for their contributions and just trying to give a little back, so congratulations for that and the safety award. Those two are not tied together, but I think they do work hand in hand in, in keeping your workers' comp ratio low, so to that, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn, would you like to say anything?
Well, thank you, from everybody in Chambers County. I take zero responsibility. Well, I've got to be honest, Ryan, Ryan had, Ryan had this as part of his job activities. Yeah, yeah. So Ryan had this as part of his responsibilities before I ever came along. I think it's very early right now to gauge if any of the efforts I've made have paid off yet. I know we've seen some, some substantial injury reductions, and I hope to see a whole lot more, but on, you know, on behalf of everybody in Chambers County, we're proud to participate, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the way it's worded, Discussing Consider Recognizing, we recognize...
We do a photo?
Stay up here. Yeah, we just get behind them. Slide in the middle there.
I'm here, they always put me beside these big guys, you know, just... Well, then I can't see her. Let Gloria get hers and then you can do yours.
Everybody, look, look over here, I'm gonna take several. Good, and make sure that's made that has everybody's names, so we can get...
Air look okay?
Okay, me too. Commissioner Hammond, if you can pitch this way for me, okay, this way, between these shoulders, there.
There you go.
Thank you.
You got yours, Sam? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ryan.
Y'all keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your commitment, because it really makes sure you're pleased and understand that you're working. Is it? Thank you.
We are supporting.
Thank you, sir.
Corey, run off there.
Not any doubt.
Corey, I'll go back to you if you're ready. Three point two, Discussing Consider Change Order Requesting Amount of nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars from Danenbaum Engineering for fourteen oh nine Bridge Management and Inspection, Corey.
Okay, I'm just gonna be a little bit brutally honest here, I'm very disappointed in Danenbaum on this item. We, you know, we basically, you know, had the, had the roadway portion going. December of twenty nineteen, we did the, the change order to go ahead and move forward with this bridge project, the bridge portion. Danen gave, Danenbaum a pretty good chunk of change to, to do the, finish out the plan changes, plans were essentially done, do the plan changes and get it out to TechDOT. They got them to us in March, and we started working with TechDOT to get these things done from March of twenty twenty all the way through basically February of this year before we got, you know, permission from TechDOT to move forward with the bid process. So we actually was able to bid it first of April. Danenbaum waits until after the bids already been, are in, and we get to the point of trying to move forward with a contractor award and execution of contract, and then a few weeks before, they send us a change order for basically a million dollars to do the management inspection, when we already had an existing contract with them from twenty-eleven. I don't want to escalate that now. Anyway, I just, I think they know it's excessive, and in, in my opinion, they waited last minute thinking they were tying our hands, and I just, I, I kicked back to Danenbaum, you know, on this, and just thought that, you know, basically called this out, this excessive, and it's late, and, you know, this doesn't seem right, and, you know, they put in the packet, you know, sent information in the packet, kind of their response, but I just disagree with it personally, so.
I don't think anybody up here is quite to agree with it. No, no, I'm not.
No, I'm not either.
I'll entertain a motion.
Well, how, how do we move forward? I mean, or do we need to go to the next line item?
Well, we need...
I, I think we can, I'll make a motion, do we not approve it?
Motion made by Commissioner Combs to not approve 3.2, Discussing Consider Request for the amount of nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars from Danenbaum for engineering for fourteen oh nine Bridge Management Inspection. Motion made by, to reject by Commissioner Combs, seconded by Commissioner Tice. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to deny. Okay, 3.3, Discussing Consider Advertising for New Engineering Consulting Firm to oversee fourteen oh nine Bridge Management Inspection, Corey.
So on this, there's been some discussion, and that goes back to Tommy's question, you know, what's, what's next? And so, I think there's, there's been some discussion, we've talked with our attorney with purchasing, of whether or not we, we have to go up with a, basically an RFQ, or basically can an SOQ be utilized to speed the process? Obviously, if you have to advertise for an RFQ, you're looking at a few weeks of advertisement and then evaluations and then moving forward the process. There are... There are places where we use both situations within the county, and so I've just put this on here as a discussion item and you know, basically looking for direction of the court on which way y'all want to go on this. Obviously, if we could go directly to an SOQ and select a, a firm for, for doing this, it saves some time. That's honestly, I've been waiting. We, we haven't done the contract with Angel Brothers as of yet. We're, you know, obviously, it's, we can, if we start at July first, it's good, but there's some timing issues there as well because contractors don't generally like working in each other's work zones. There's a liability problem there. And so with this rain delay on the roadway portion, it's pushed back the, you know, the time when the asphalt will be done and out of the way and signs kind of removed where Angel Brothers get in there. Until it's done, you know, we don't exactly know that timeframe. I still think that the asphalt will be done. I don't know that we'll have Tech dot buy off by July first, which was my initial date of getting Angel Brothers started, but you know, so anyway, some, somewhere in the month of Ju- July, we need to get Angel Brothers going. So I think the court could go either way here. And of course, that would be dependent on Ashley's, you know, analysis of the situation as well. But anyway, I don't.
I, I've spoke with George. I'd like to hear a little bit from our purchasing on this area.
Yes, sir. So, so commissioners, again, I think we have spoke, and one thing is to caution is to make sure that our contract is to where we can do this with Danenbaum, et cetera. So that's the first thing we want to make sure and look at. Do we have a procurement allow us to do this? Yes. The RFQ process is the best process, but it also takes eight to ten weeks to get a firm in. We have some firms by the code that we can bring in as long as our engineer feels comfortable with them and their pricing is less than this million dollars. So we can do that. Okay? So one or the other. I can be directed either way, and I can do either one, but the contract's the most important thing. We've been very, very good about keeping up with these contracts in the last four or five years. We've had some issues come up, and thanks to some good contracting, we've been taking care of the tax dollar. On a side note, as a, as a, as a taxpayer here in Chambers County, I appreciate y'all not saying no to a million dollar change order. It might end up being a million dollars, but I think we need to stop dropping, look and see what we have here. So appreciate everybody in the room for doing that. And like I say, so that's, that would be my take on it, making sure legal's okay with it. We have some avenues we can use. Yes, sir.
Okay, do we, do we need a committee or someone with you to help make this decision?
All I need is-
Contract, or you do it by yourself?
All I need is direction from your engineer, from our engineer.
Okay.
Okay, because he's the, the expert in this.
Okay.
As to what we need and how we're gonna do it. And then pricing is, we'll work on that.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions or comments?
No, but time is of the essence.
Absolutely.
I don't think we have time for the standard order.
Absolutely. So I mean, that's again, we, we, we have avenues to get around that. Just as soon as that contract is, is cleared by our legal department, we can get after it.
Okay, do we need to go ahead and make a motion to give you direction to?
What's the verbiage in your?
Discussing considered advertising for the engineering consultant firm to oversee fourteen oh nine Bridge Management and Inspection. I don't know if that's broad enough for us to.
Yeah, the verbiage is good on that. Okay.
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 Okay, I mean, I'll entertain a motion that.
Cory, Cory and George will.
Cory and George will work on it.
Figure out who they want to talk to.
We do. We just need to give him with direction.
Yeah, I don't know what the process is there.
Okay.
You, you want to give us the verbiage that we need to?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at here. So that's why I was looking at Heather. Heather, so it says discuss good advertising for new engineering consultant. That tells me I'm going out for either an RFQ or the SOQ. So it's just, it's pretty vague, but I think, again, we just got to make sure in doing the time, timely, you have actions, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think a motion to authorize our county engineer to work with the purchasing agent to advertise and select a engineering consultant for, to oversee the FM fourteen oh nine Bridge.
Could, could we make sure and add that after the contracting has been looked at to make sure we're good to go?
Well, I'll add to, to work with the county attorney to, and the purchasing agent.
Thank you.
Motion made by Commissioner Tom, seconded by-
Okay.
Commissioner Hammond to advertise for the motion.
To, to advertise for a consulting engineer?
Okay, is, is that what we're doing? Advertising? You're going back to the group of engineers that we already have. So that's what, that's what's getting me.
Well, that's, that's the verb.
See, that, that's. Instead of advertise to select.
Yeah.
Okay. The consulting engineer to oversee the FM fourteen oh nine Bridge Management and Inspection.
Okay, amended a motion by Commissioner Tom. Commissioner Hammond, you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? George, is that good enough?
Uh, I'm gonna say, once legal looks at it, I'm gonna say we're, we should be good to go. If there's an issue, I will let y'all know.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
In nays, motion carries. Say three point four, discussing consider Chambers County portion of FM five sixty-five utility cost in the amount of seven hundred eleven thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Corey.
So this is just basically an FYI of consideration. This is not an invoice or bill at this point, but Tech dot's notified us of the costs that they had on the utility adjustments out on five sixty-five. We had a discussion last year with the Director of Transportation Planning and Development on changes that were being made out there, and it was, we're gonna require, primarily the biggest one was the pump station that was over there in a service with the gas, with that gas and oil and gas lines go through. And so the cost associated with, was exceptionally high. They got a bill and they, they told me, don't worry about it. We're gonna, we're gonna work with you. I didn't exactly know what that meant at that time. I was hopeful that it meant they were covering it, but it appears that they were lessening the, the blow. Normally, the county's portion, if we're disadvantaged, like say Liberty or some of our other surrounding areas, it would be ten percent cost. Normally, for Chambers County, our, our participation portion would be twenty percent, but it appears that they gave us the, not a complete take care of, but knocked us to the ten percent basic rate essentially for their cost that Tech dot's had out of, out of pocket. So that's basically a notification. I could, you know, you know, I can send back and say, you know, ask if we could have some additional consideration or, you know, depending on what the court says today, but I just wanted to give y'all a heads up of, you know, what information I was getting from Tech dot at the time.
Any way to get any help? Any of that from H G A C or anything?
Uh, I don't think it could come from H G A C that I'm aware of. You know, I know there's, you know, there's loan options that I've worked with in, in the past with local entities for, I think they're called SIB loans for utilities. Normally, I've done that, it's with their own utilities that they're adjusting, like city-owned water and sewer, you know, facilities. I don't know if that would apply, but still, it's only a loan. It's not a, you know, it's a low interest for, you know, situation, but anyway, I, I can go back and talk to Tech dot if y'all desire, just to, you know.
Keep.
Keep working on it.
Always.
Okay.
If they got a five percent program.
Two percent.
But we need to keep in mind that, that entire package was like seven point one million dollars for all the utility movement, so, you know, our cost would be ten percent of that, so.
Yeah, I mean, overall, it's, if we had to do that upfront, because on fourteen oh nine, we had, we had to eat all of those costs upfront. You know, that was a hundred percent on us, and then we build the road. You know, we had all the design, all of the utility adjustment, all the right-of-way purchase, and then Tech dot's paying us a portion of the construction cost. On this one, of course, you know, and that's gonna be a Tech dot road. This one is already a Tech dot facility, and we're, you know, we're out ten percent on just the utility. So overall, it's a, it's a good deal for a high priority project that's been on the books for years and years and years and years and years. But, you know, we're, we're, we're getting it done. So overall, I, I think it is a good deal still, but we'll continue to see if we got any leverage there.
I think one good thing probably think about on this one, this utility move will also serve for the next project for the widening of the road also, so.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Yeah, so I was fixing to run that up. That was, puts us in position for that.
We will still have, you know, whatever we end up doing with new right-of-way purchases and stuff, if, you know, for that other project, trying to extend, you know, the, maybe the angle of attack of one forty-six as it comes around five sixty-five, you know, the bridge and all that stuff, there will be additional, you know, even if we get right-of-way donations, utility costs are still gonna be a chunk of that, you know, when we get into that corridor with the power lines and all that kind of stuff, that could be, depending on what we do, that could be an additional factor, so.
Okay. Do you want us to make a motion, giving you direction, or just?
Well, I, I think I understand where the court's at, and that's what I kind of thought, but if you want to give specific direction, that's fine.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
Uh, I don't know that we need to, I don't know. What are we gonna?
You don't think need a motion?
I think it's tackled.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll table for three point four.
One percent.
Got Cory to get. Okay, we're gonna go to economic development. Is Samantha out there?
Mickey, the door is shut into the hallway because they're, they're sitting on there.
We'll go to PJ.
He's right here.
Yeah, he's there. They see Samantha's out there. Just know what to go to. And we may.
Well, we gotta go to hearing, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Ten thirty, we got the, yeah.
Sure, I don't think Samantha, that there will be fairly quick. We may not even need her. We go to five point one, discussing consider. Ma'am. Okay.
I'm heading me down.
Five point one, discussing consider approving proposal for code Finley related to proposed T D A T X C D B G C F Oak Street Bridge.
That's one of my long acronym names.
Take a little X out of there.
Uh, so this is just the, it's called a proposal, but it's actually Cobb Finley's contract pertaining to the proposed Oak Street Bridge Repair.
Have your legal reviewed this?
Yes, sir.
Looks like a good deal. By the way, their, their percentage for management inspections, two and a half percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hence the reason the red flag was raised, not twenty percent.
Uh, yeah.
I'm excited to work with them. I've never worked with Cobb Finley in the past, so George and I have been working really hard to get new companies in and open up opportunities for different organizations, so we're excited to have them on board for this. They're actually the contractor for the city of Mont Belvieu for the Water Development Board project that we're working on, so I think it's gonna be a really good opportunity for us to build a closer working relationship with them on both of these projects.
Intertain a motion.
So.
Motion made by Commissioner Tice.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion?
Just curious, if this is paid for the grant, are there gonna be any restrictions placed on the bridge since we're using grant money? So in the future, if we wanna, let's just say we want to just take the bridge out and throw it away, are there any restrictions?
No, sir.
Tied to that, that grant? They're not gonna tell us what we can and can't do with.
No, sir. No, sir.
Similar to what's going on with McLeod Park.
Right, not for this one. McLeod Park was a different program. It was C A P, and they had some different restrictions associated with that, and generally, that's why they don't do brick and mortar for buildings anymore, because that kind of, I like to call it the long tail of grants, so. No, no restrictions on this. There will be some additional environmental assessments that have to be done as opposed to if we were doing it just because it has grant funds, but it's always beneficial to have some more environmental engagement and, and research done before a project anyway, so.
Okay.
I have a question, Samantha.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you recall the length of that bridge?
Not off the top of my head.
All right.
I know we are adding an additional apron on either side, concrete apron, or I'm not an engineer like you, but an additional apron to bring it out a little bit further.
Okay.
To tie in.
All right.
But I don't.
It'd be nice if it was, I mean, that was one of the things we were looking at, is make sure it's twenty feet. So just a note from what Tony just made me think of it, if it's at twenty feet or more, it would have Tech dot oversight for ins- annual inspections or bi-annual inspections.
Sure.
And then in the future, if it had issues, Tech dot would actually take the lead and.
Oh, that'd be nice.
So as long as it's twenty feet or more, it can, we can submit it for the bridge program for Tech, under Tech dot's guidance, so.
Oh, that's good to know. I'll look at the specs and then I'll get with you on it.
I know it's close. We just want to make sure it meets that requirement.
Twenty-four is the number that's in my head right now, but I don't, there's a lot of numbers in my head right now, too.
That's good.
Okay.
So Cobb Finley's price was about three eighty-five, three hundred eighty-five thousand.
Sure.
And the county is matching twenty-five percent.
Of that total, so it's twenty-five percent. No, sir, of that.
Above that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, this grant has not been, the application has not been approved. We're still in the application phase, so it has been submitted. This is right now just a proposed project. But we have to do some, like, work upfront. We should find out in October if we receive funding or not. I feel pretty confident that we'll receive funding on this.
Okay.
But we have not yet, so it's still kind of an idea in theory.
And we still had funds available from the original.
Yes, sir. All those funds are still set aside, so you guys will not have to budget any additional funds. We already have them named for this project.
Is that it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go to five point two, discussing consider approving request for twenty-five thousand hot hotel occupancy tax fund for the Anawak Area Chamber of Commerce, D B A, Texas, Gator Fest. Samantha.
So my office facilitates the hot fund program. I, just for your guys' information, I've been working on kind of redoing the program, make it a more standardized grant-type program for the future, so here in the next couple of weeks, I'll come and present that to you guys. Tony and I have talked about it a little bit as well, so. But for this year, Gator Fest has requested twenty-five thousand dollars in hot funds. It's my recommendation that you move forward with funding that. But I, I looked through the application, and the only thing that has not been approved is their mass gathering permit. It's still pending discussion and approval. I think it's made it through Fire Marshal, Environmental Health, and is now at EMS, but Caitlin's assured me that they're willing to do whatever they need to do to get approval and that they're willing to work with the county in any way that they need to.
Okay, you want us to approve it pending approval of?
Yes, sir. That would be my recommendation. Yes, sir.
Is that typically what we award them?
Yes, that's what they've asked for in the past.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Hammond, seconded by Mr. Tice. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just so you guys know, it's hot fun season, so I expect we'll be back pretty regularly with stuff like this.
Five point three, discussing consider approving the temporary park use agreement for September sixth through September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one for Anawak Area Chamber of Commerce, D B A, Texas, Gator Fest.
So again, this is part of the hot fun process. Since we facilitate it, we generally try to make sure that they have all of their documentation done at one time, so that we're not bothering you guys too much. I looked over the park use agreement. They've actually shaved down what they normally request. They normally block up about two and a half weeks. It's down to two weeks this year. We haven't had any issues with them utilizing the park in the past. Kirk's aware of it and is on board with it, so again, my recommendation is that we move forward and authorize them to utilize it.
Okay. Intertain a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Hammond, seconded by Tombs. Mr. Tombs, any further discussion? All in favor? Nays, motion carries. Okay, is that it? All you have to mention?
I have some consent stuff, but it's pretty straightforward, so. You guys need me. I'll be here. No, that one's not mine. It's a hot fun one, but they haven't, I didn't put it on court.
We can skip through that real quick.
Sure.
Six point one, parks and restoration discuss- 6.1, parks and restoration, discussing, consider approving the park use agreement with Barrow Ranch HOA for a car show and poker run to be held on July 17th, 2021.
They're not getting hot funds. Sorry. So just to clarify, I don't, um, if they don't get hot funds, I usually don't do their park use agreement, it'll come straight from parks, but I would assume that if it's on the court agenda, they've agreed to everything in the park use agreement. Um, if you're not familiar with it, the park use agreement has some requirements that we absolutely need anybody that's going to block off the park, um, to agree to, there's some insurance requirements, um, if they're blocking off the park, they agree to pay the utilities incurred during that blockage, um, which is beneficial to us, if the public can't use it, then these entities absolutely need to take care of those fees associated with it. Um, there are some requirements associated with maintaining the park, making sure that they're not going to, you know, damage it, or their visitors won't damage it, and then that entrance comes into play if anybody gets injured or if there is damage to our facilities. So the park use agreement is absolutely essential, and, um, by executing it, I would assume that they're agreeing to do what they've said they're going to do, and that Kirk and his team will be on top of it.
I might add that this is probably, I think, maybe the fifth year that they've done this, and it's the same agreement that they had in the past, and, um, legal has looked at it and approved it, and Kurt's seen it, so.
Sure, I'm sure that they're, if this is the fifth year.
I will move for approval. Motion by.
Second.
Tombs, seconded by Commissioner Tice. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we will go to.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got it 10:30 at the memorial, so we're going to go to. 1.1. We can't do that till. It's 10:24 now. Yeah. Wonder if we can go ahead and read the deal?
You can.
We can?
Uh huh.
Okay, we're gonna go to 1.5, moment at the memorial supporting Chambers County fallen officers, resolution adopted May 11th, 2021, and I think Commissioner Tice is going to read the resolution.
Thank you, Judge. Chambers County resolution. Whereas, the well-being of all people of the United States, the state of Texas and Chambers County is preserved to enhance as a direct result of the vigilance and dedication of our law enforcement officers, and whereas, we rely on law enforcement officers to keep Chambers County safe, enforce our laws, and respond in times of crisis, and whereas, it is a law enforcement officers who stand ready to serve and protect even when their lives, even with their lives when necessary, and whereas, four Chambers County peace officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. Sheriff John Leider Frost, end of watch Saturday, November 10th, 1900. Deputy Constable Levi Oliver, end of watch Wednesday, March 5th, 1930. Deputy Sheriff Dirk Ray Nierum, end of watch Sunday, October 17th, 2004. Deputy Sheriff Shane Thomas Detwiler, end of watch Monday, July 13th, 2009, and whereas, we come together now to honor these fallen Chambers County officers and those officers across the state of Texas and our nation, whose lives have been taken in the line of duty. Now therefore be it resolved by the check, by the Commissioners Court of Chambers County, Texas, that all Chambers County residents honor the memory of Sheriff Frost, Deputy Constable Oliver, Deputy Sheriff Nierum, and Deputy Sheriff Detwiler, and express our gratitude to their families for their dedication and service, and it be further resolved that we, the Chambers Commissioners Court of Chambers County, Texas, pay tribute to these fallen officers and all law enforcement officers in Chambers County, the state of Texas and the, and the United States, serving to protect us from evil and preserving all our freedoms. Passed and approved by the Chambers County Commissioner Court on this day of May 2021, 25th.
Motion by Commissioner Court, seconded by Commissioner Court. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we'll, um, recess for now at 10:27 for our moment at the memorial, and we'll come back at, um. I'm going to take it. 10:45? Is that enough time, Sheriff?
You probably should put 11.
11, okay.
The reason is, so I'm going to give you an opportunity to grab your refreshment, relax a minute, we'll get the service, the orange service, that'll be about 10:15, and since the Shane Detwiler family's here, I think it'd be good for Commissioners Court to get a picture for them for the memorial. Well, I'll keep everybody downstairs, we'll get some refreshments, and then y'all can come up, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. We will reconvene at, um, 11 o'clock. We're standing reset at 10:28. We are. Ashley.
There he is.
We're ready. Okay. We're back in Commissioners Court after, at, um, get my computer back on here, I'm going to just. What time is it? It is 11:03, back from our moment at the memorial, which was very nice, we appreciate everybody coming out and showing support. We hate that we have to have that, for this unfortunately part of the world that we live in nowadays, that, um, there's no respect for law enforcement and that, and that's a crying shame, so appreciate everybody being there. Get my computer back though. Okay, we are going to go to. 1.3, discuss and consider resolution declaring May 2021 as elderly abuse prevention month in Chambers County. We have a resolution that's going to be read by Commissioner Hammond.
May 2021, elder abuse awareness month. Whereas, May is elder abuse prevention month in Texas and Department of Family and Protective Services. Adult Protective Services Division in Chambers County is raising awareness about abuse, neglect, and exploitation of seniors and vulnerable adults, and whereas, people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of Chambers County by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of diverse backgrounds, and whereas, these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, and whereas, elder abuse can happen to men and women of all income levels, culture, and ethnic backgrounds, approximately one in 10 Americans 65 and older have experienced some form of abuse, and whereas, last year, APS in Chambers County investigated 103 cases of abuse, neglect, and exploitation of older adults and people with disabilities. Self-neglect was risk factor in most of the cases, loneliness, loneliness and isolation can make seniors more vulnerable to abuse, neglect, and exploitation, and whereas, abuse hurts at any age. Sorry. At any age, and all people deserve dignity, respect, and the right to live in a society free from abuse, and now, therefore, I, Jimmy Cillia, County Judge of Chambers County, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 21 as Elderly Abuse Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse, neglect, and exploitation of people who are elderly or have disabilities.
Motion by Commissioner Hammond.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tice. All in favor?
Aye.
Any further motion carries? Mr. Thomas.
Kimbar.
Kimbar.
Yes.
Okay.
K-I-M-B-A-R.
Thank you. Do you like to say a few words at the microphone there? Introduce yourself?
Thanks for, that was a wonderful ceremony you had earlier, I'm glad that I got to be here for that. Appreciate that, and appreciate our law enforcement officers as the first responders for assist us with things that, uh, the situations we have, and, uh, of course, we, we talk about abuse and exploitation of the elderly and folks who are being, uh, abused by family members or, or persons who are caring for them, and also exploited by taking money or other advantage of, but also there's self-neglect, and I know Chambers County has seen its share of self-neglect situations that we've been involved with, with y'all in Chambers County also, so don't forget about those self-neglecters, those who have, uh, aged in place for too long or need our help, so, um, you can always call our hotline at 800-252-54, let's see, 252-5400, that's our hotline, and, and also, you know, we do have the office in Liberty, and, um, and, uh, and we have, uh, uh, seven workers at the gate now that we have dedicated to Liberty and Chambers County. Thank you, and God bless, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
800, I'm sorry, I kind of did stutter on it, it's 800-252-5400.
Do we, um, do we have a resolution, anything?
Is that like a 24-hour hotline, or?
Yes, the hotline is 24-hour hotline, there are times that it's backed up, you can always give, uh, the local office it, uh, call it, uh, 337-936-336-7283, I believe is the local office number, but, uh, unfortunately, you're going to call the hotline, I know there's one time, I think it was a Chambers County person was making a call, might have been the judge himself, but, uh, and it was actually a backthug of a hundred, of an hour, I didn't believe it, but I called it, for some reason that day it was, but usually, they have, uh, they'll get right to you, it's not that long a wait. 24 hours a day, again, hotline is available, call, and, um, we'll get somebody within 24 hours to respond to you.
If you want to come on up, we'll, okay, Tom, you want to do a picture? And who are you with? I see the dude on your shirt, I see.
Adult Protective Services.
Okay.
Department of Family and Protective Services.
We have an office in Liberty.
We have workers that are dedicated for Chambers County, we have a liberty office.
Ashley.
Sir, sir.
You want in the picture? Okay, she's in there, she's in there.
Yeah.
And get the hook.
They swing it out and get Tom in the back of the head.
When they first put those, that was so weird. Okay, yeah, we got this one over here. Okay. Okay, yes, bear with me, I've got a couple cameras here, so. No, like you hold those smiles a long time.
That's killing me.
Thank you, Sergeant.
I'd like a copy of that one. I will, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to 5.4, public hearing at 10:00 a.m. regarding the Tulsa Incorporated 2021 reinvestment zone. Uh, we're going to recess out of the regular session of Commissioners Court at 11:11, and go into our public hearing. Anyone got any public comments? I imagine BJ does.
His comment, I can't see. Darwin, okay, sorry, I just.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so what was the question? There's a survey in the, in the packet, but not an actual map of the location, uh, but we can provide that actually, it's located in the, sure, if, uh, by way of reminder to the court, in fact, we're still in the public hearing and for commentary. Uh, Tulsa Incorporated is another entity that's part of this, uh, emerging sector of plastics, um, this is a compounding company that makes additives and the like related to polyethylene, uh, the court entertained and approved the tax abatement application on April 13th of this year, and approved the application for reinvestments on the 27th of April of this year. Uh, Tulsa intends to build, at least for the first phase of their project, a 110,000 square foot facility, which would create, uh, 20 to 60 full-time jobs by year 2026, and, uh, invest approximately $38 million in total build out. Uh, the facility is to be located in the Cedarport industrial park, um, one of many there, and, uh, they have, uh, provided notice of public hearings required by statute, and this is a public hearing that's being conducted to have commentary on the project.
Okay. Any more public comments? If not, we will adjourn now the public, um, hearing at 11:13 a.m., and go back into our regular session of, uh, Commissioners Court. Okay, we'll go to 5.5, discuss and consider order establishing the Tulsa Incorporated 2021 reinvestment zone. BJ?
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, uh, by statute, uh, the designation of the reinvestment zone requires action or order by the court, um, the Tulsa has applied and made, uh, public notice of, uh, the application of, uh, for the establishment of the reinvestment zone, they met the requirements that are required by policy, and, um, the establishment of the reinvestment zones necessary so as to move to the next phase of, uh, completion of the tax payment process. So what's presented before you is the order to designate and create the Tulsa Incorporated 2021 reinvestment zone.
To approve the order to create the Tulsa 2021 reinvestment zone.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tombs, seconded by Commissioner Tice. Any further comments? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Go to 5.6, discuss and consider notice of public hearing July 7th, uh, July 13th, 2021 regarding the Tulsa Incorporated tax abatement.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, uh, as consistent with policy, there's a 30-day requirement, at least notice requirement, uh, for, to post, uh, the intent of the county to enter into the, uh, tax payment agreement with Tulsa Incorporated, and the request is to post notes of public hearing, uh, to that, for that to take place on July 13th of 2021, during that court.
Okay, we'll do that at, uh, 10:00 a.m.?
Yes, sir.
So move. Motion by Commissioner Kong, second by Commissioner Tice, to have a public hearing July 13th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. on Tulsa Incorporated tax abatement. All in favor?
Aye.
Impose motion carries. 5.7, discuss and consider core power incentive recommendation. BJ, before you get started on this, I would, all these tax abatements and all these companies, these are all competitive. They have looked in other areas, and I know you can elaborate more on core power, which we had our meeting the other day. This, this core power started at 50 different sites. This, the, the people of core power we met with last week, they have visited 50 different sites on the ground, and they have narrowed it down to three. Phoenix, Arizona.
Yes.
Chambers County, Texas, and where in Florida? I don't know, somewhere in Florida. But these, these companies are looking elsewhere. They can go elsewhere without these tax abatements. I mean, we are trying to entice them here because it gives us tax revenue in years to come to help sustain this. Because I mean, I, I mean, and I know I've said this here before, we look at a lot of other counties that do not give tax abatements, and they're hurting right now, and it's sad out there. But, and we also have other states that give 100% tax abatement for 20 years. So we are being competitive, trying to get jobs in industry in our county. You want to elaborate on core power?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. The, the 50 sites that you alluded to was a subset of 500 sites that were initially identified for, you know, this project. So the funneling, if you will, because site selection and economic development is a process of elimination and not selection, right? So the, that is the environment, that was the universe of potential sites dwindling down, and the competing sites in Texas were several, and this has been a site that's emerged. If I could add some more background as to how we got to here. This prospect, this was a lead that was released by the Governor's Office of Economic Development back in 2019 as Project Bullseye. This is, the project in and of itself, as it was described then, and we responded, the foundation responded and submitted it to the Chambers County site at the time, not the site of interest right now, but it was the Cedarport Industrial Park at the time. This is a one and a half million square foot facility that would manufacture up to 10-plus gigawatts of lithium-ion battery systems. Now, the lithium-ion battery themselves are no larger than this. This is wide and yay thick. But they can be configured, stacked, racked, and packed in various different configurations. And so the site that they've honed in on in Chambers County has some appeal across a number of areas. If you recall, the county adopted poly, policy back in, when they updated the Chapter 31 policy, citing the, or at least recognizing the qualified opportunity zones that have been designated by Governor Abbott for the state of Texas. And so when Governor Abbott, it was federal legislation, but a focus on rural development was focused by Governor Abbott. So there are 518 square miles of designated qualified opportunity zones in Chambers County. The site of interest is in a qualified opportunity zone. It's also because of the citing criteria, qualifying criteria for opportunity zones, they also qualify for new market tax credits. The equity partners, or two of the equity partners that are involved in this project have a sincere interest in citing in a qualified opportunity zone. So that's a driving factor, along with the other elements of the site that we can talk about later. This, this project is, it has the potential to create up to 3,000 new jobs. And so when you hear that, you think, no way, is it construction jobs you're talking about, or full-time jobs? But those who were privy to see the presentation, and we've been working on this since November, they contacted Judge Sylvia and Aaron, and they subsequently alerted us that the project had reemerged, you know, as core power. They developed who they were at that time. Those 3,000 new jobs have significant impact, as noted on my cover letter of recommendations. The qualified investment is going to range anywhere between 750 million and a billion dollars. And the models that are presented to you today are based upon a capital deployment of about 938 million. The meeting that you and Judge Sylvia convened in the day with all the other taxing entities was important to get a familiarization and present the project, as we have been communicating in dialogue with the other taxing entities, namely Trinity Bay Conservation District, the Anoak ISD, and the Chambers Health Hospital District, along with Chambers County, to provide a basis of understanding for the project, and also a basis for going forward and recommending a very competitive incentive framework. That's the targeted start date or selection, and this is fourth quarter of 2021. So in the cover letter that I provided, you know, for you, shows the economic impact of 2,500 full-time jobs in this particular sector. As we've done in the past, is make recommendations in, because we have the capacity to run these economic impact analyses. And for the sake of the court and others, just to talk about the direct, indirect, and induced impacts, the 2,500 jobs that would be created in this sector, which is the production of storage battery manufacturing, the direct impact of 25 jobs, of having that many people in the county, in this sector, doing the work that's associated with it, would have impacted 997 million, 262,466 dollars. The indirect effect, meaning the cascading effect through the company, indirect impact, would create an additional 809 jobs with sales output or consumption, you know, being in the area of 239 million. The induced impact would create an additional 1,000 jobs with the induced economic impact of 178 million. And the total impact of the 25 jobs would be 4,320 jobs with the economic impact of 1.4 billion dollars. So that is, you know, hard to kind of envision, you know, with respect to what this means when you look at the manufacturing profile, and we can provide a report. I have the report here. It's a 39-page report for your own application, and didn't want to send it in as part of the submission because it adds to your packet, but we'll provide that for the Commissioners' own application to see how the economic impact cascades to the economy. So what, what the ask is, what the recommendation has been made, and what Judge Sylvia communicated to the other taxing entities that is, you know, based upon the transformational potential of this project fundamentally changed Central County, if in fact, they, you know, cite in this location. The target site is just south of the rest area, on I-10, the 250-acre carbo. And we're still working on, you know, layout and the like. But because of the transformational impact, the industry sector, and potential for continued investment, you know, in ideal world for them, they would replicate what Toyota has done in San Antonio. They would cite, they would co-locate their, their suppliers, because lithium battery production, it's heavy. It's just a lot of weight. And so the closer you are to, and on an integrated basis with respect to, you know, who supplies you with what lithium and packaging and that sort of thing, it benefits the operations. So the, for various reasons, and the impact that would have on Central County going forward, the recommendation for consideration today is to consider a 10- to 15-year tax abatement at 80% for this project. That is the same recommendation that's being, going to be proposed and presented to the respective boards of the other taxing entities. That's the best-case scenario that would make this site competitive with the site in Arizona and the site in Florida. I can speak to Arizona. We have been involved with competing sites in Arizona, and there's some tax credits and tax structures that are unique to Arizona. That provides for some, a lot more flexibility. We had a tangential relationship with LCY Lastmers in Daytona. They've been there for quite some time. The Taiwanese manufacturing, chip manufacturing concern that has displaced Intel, you know, with respect to microchip manufacturing, there was a link to that project because of the Taiwanese relationship. And so we had, we're privy to see, you know, how Arizona incentivizes projects, right? And so it's not an apple-to-apples comparison, but it can be very appealing, you know, and so it's, I understand why they're looking at Arizona. Florida, on the other hand, Florida Power and Light and other entities own property. They own land, that they can bring to bear deposits. We competed against projects in Florida in the past, so we understand the mechanics. And so I say all this to say that the ask of an 80% tax, tax abatement compared to the economic impact that it's going to have on the county going forward is very reasonable and rational. So it's, and making a case for that, but that's what's presented to you today. There are two models that are as part of the, the recommendation packet showing, you know, the, the impact over time, what 80% of the proposed value deployment. The values that are noted here are, you know, starting in year one, to that is probably most likely 2022 or 2023. And you can see the values start out at 353 million, go up to 585 million, 838 million, and 938. Very similar to what, these would be the values that would be presented as part of the Chapter 313 Value Limitation Application to Anoak ISD. I can't understate the importance of this integrated opportunity from the taxing entities because Anoak ISD, the qualifying threshold for the Chapter 313 Value Limitation incentive is $60 million. And so the benefit, you know, they freeze their taxes, and obviously, we've all heard about Chapter 313, and this area has benefited tremendously from the ability of the local school districts to enter into these agreements. This Greek School District, primarily, the Barbassil School District, then at the forefront at structuring these kinds of agreements. But the revenue potential and the growth potential, and some challenges, because in fact, you can envision 3,000 jobs coming into Central County, you know, that, that could have an impact on the ISD, but that's another contributing factor, you know, to the appeal for this particular site. So the, the first spreadsheet shows the impact of the first 10 years, and then the second shows an additional five years, higher the county would consider wanting to enter into this. County's never entered into a 15-year tax abatement. The idea that maybe some stipulation is part of the response, you know, depending on the court's decision, that the court would conceptually integrate to a 10-year tax abatement, and then at the time, at the end of that term, review circumstances and the like, and then consider an additional five-year tax abatement or tax incentive, similar to a reimbursement model that we've done on other projects, the Whismer Project or others, which is allowable at a period one. So that is what is being presented for consideration.
What is, what's your recommendation to do on the 15-year with reassessment after the 10-years?
10-year, yes. I think, I think that's very palatable. It makes some sense. It shows, allows the, the company to demonstrate their capacity to meet these investment numbers, but also the intent, as they've mentioned before, with the ability to co-locate the other, their suppliers and the like. The big challenge here is working with Entergy, who's a power provider, to bring power, this kind of power, to facilitate this, this production. But once it's here, it further enhances the potential for other projects in Central County.
I was going to ask you about that. Did Entergy meet with y'all last week also?
Yes, yes, we've been having ongoing discussions with Entergy, and they have met with the Governor's Office, and we're trying to address some issues, some PUC issues that may come into play for this, try to accelerate the kind of, the ability for, for Entergy to bring power to Central County, because it's, it's a ways away. There is some power available, you know, it's about three or four miles away, and that could be used as the preliminary construction power and the like, but the main power source would have to be brought over 20 miles. And so that's a substantial cost that has to take consideration. So, you know, in an ideal world, the, we would present holistic or comprehensive incentives overview for all the taxing entities here, so that the company consider that, and then Entergy as well, because obviously, if the local taxing entities are willing to make this sort of investment, incentive investment, they obviously want to do that as well, as well as the company, trying to reach some sort of proportionality as to what, how much money the company is going to invest to be able to bring power here, and what energy is going to be making investment. Some of the performance that we've seen indicate that the power consumption, even with the, one of the elements of this project is a vast solar array, you know, because you can imagine, you know, the number of solar panels on a one and a half million square foot facility, and then, you know, auxiliary to that, they could sell power, but the revenue from power consumption alone, based on, you know, their modeling to, to Entergy, upwards of $47 to $52 million a year. So, you know, that's a motivating factor for Entergy to take in mind with respect to how we structure, you know, this, but it is the limiting factor for this project in this site. I mean, they've talked to Brad Wilbur, you know, with respect to drainage and so forth and so on, and they were, and still scheduled to be on DRC this Thursday. Trying to get some more definition, but there is a sense of urgency to the extent that to get aligned and aware, so as to, for them, the motivator is, you know, do we, we want to, really, we want to be in Texas, but do we want to bypass the opportunity in the other competing, you know, states? And so that's where we are, presenting the case to the court in the text.
What's the timeline? What's court's timeline?
As soon, as soon as possible. They, they want to make a decision last week. You know, they, this is something that they've been working toward, and so they have shifted their site plan initially. This is an area that is owned by a single landowner, so there's some adaptability there, but it's in a floodplain.
Five years?
No, no, five. Pilot.
Oh, that's, they pay a pilot as to the taxes.
Oh, yeah, this is the, yeah, that's the.
Yeah, they pay the pilots.
No, pilot estimate. No, this is the school equalization tax. We just wanted to illustrate that.
Oh, that's the, you pulled that over.
Right, but yeah.
That's not pilot pay.
Right, no, that's just to illustrate what the impact on school equalization tax, and that's something that the court.
So that now would be for mid-county school, Anoak School?
It, it would be for all the, all the schools.
All the school district?
Yes. Yeah, and that's, that's.
That's not, because we took that out of the normal.
Yeah, and that's still to be contemplated, and that's why I wanted to include it in the model, so that you guys can take a look at what that looks like, and the impact, again, in concert with whatever value limitation agreement is negotiated under Chapter 313.
See what, this will be a game changer for Central and East Chambers County.
Yeah, I think it's hard, hard, extremely hard to pass up that opportunity for, for mid-county to get this in place, and even East County too, so huge impact on the economy and, you know, jobs, no doubt.
Almost be double on your tax base day one.
Well, it's, it's consideration, Commissioner, you know, when we think about all the taxing entities, and have the benefit of, you know, the Dennis Wagner, who's the ISD superintendent, is working in concert with, getting guidance from Greg Poole. They've worked together as colleagues before at Barbassil, you know, and so that sort of expertise with respect to what can and cannot be done, being 313, is important, that expedites, you know, the decision-making. Obviously, this is a project that's akin to other projects on the West Side that the court has approved in the past. However, the transformational impacts are much greater because of the impact on the greenfield under value. The tax value of the site under consideration in 2020 was $1,012. So I, so I'll just make that, make that case.
Okay. How would you like it motion made, BJ?
So does, does a 10-year abatement and a five-year option, does that get us there?
I'm sorry, sir.
Does that get us there?
It could be, yeah, yeah. If the 15-year, I mean, I think in contemplating their model, they will look at two things. It's a go-no-go. If in fact, everything's kosher at 10 years, obviously, the court will have changed at that time, that if, I think they're going to contemplate the potential of 15 years and what that looks like. What needs to be, what's illustrated to you right now is that, as the consistent 80% rebate, right? You know, those for the additional five years. It may be 60%, it may be 40%, depending on the elements there, but I think they will estimate those as part of the overall package. And so, and their characterization, depending on the court's action today, I would implore them to model the best-case scenario, which is 15 years, based upon the current tax rate. Obviously, tax rates are going to go down and other things, but that's going to, you know, this kind of tax base coming into the county will have the impact on the hospital district's tax rate as well, which has been, you know, somewhat of a challenge in the past, because their, their tax base has been so truncated for so long. So this would allow for a incremental decrease in that value over time as well. So there are a lot of compelling interrelated benefits to a project like this. You know, going back to Hurricane Ike and the long-term recovery plan, this was envisioned, right? Eastside Industrial Park, and all the greenfield, but no one could, you know, imagine they had been lithium battery manufacturing and that sort of thing, that could come online as quickly as this could with the number of jobs. So I guess the, the motion would be to present or discuss, consider the, depending on final court action, an 80% tax abatement as presented.
So is that, is that for the 10-year and then the five-year option? Is that what we're, or the whole 15?
It's up to the court.
Entertaining motion? Who's the commissioner on the east?
I want to do it. I so moved that we accept the. The, what am I wording around here?
Five point seven.
The core power incentives of that. Ten year eighty percent.
Ten year eighty percent?
Yes, abatement.
With a five year option?
The five year option, yes.
But how it needs to be worded, BJ, or do we need to, I mean, do we need to give, I mean, a little more wording or?
No, I I think.
Just to be, I mean, competitive on this?
Yes, possibly, I I think for the benefit of the court's. Future deliberation that a ten year tax abatement at eighty percent. With the ability to enter into an extended five year agreement. At the same percentage or the appropriate percentage at the time of evaluation.
Okay, you want to word?
Word.
Commissioner Tice's motion to enter into a eighty percent abatement for ten years with an additional five years.
At at percentage.
Go ahead.
Thank you, head. I'll second it.
Thank you very much.
Any more comments?
Let's hopefully get this.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we will go to five point eight, discuss and consider. Vavago America LLC Project Redfish, chapter three eighty-one. Economic Development Program Incentive Proposal, BJ.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. You may recall back in November of twenty twenty, presented proposal. Or a business retention and expansion incentive recommendations to the court on behalf of Vavago America's Project Redfish. This is another plastics related project. Vavago America has a facility in Cedarport Industrial Park right now. They are building upon their capacity to extend what is known as a circular economy related to plastics. And the intent at the time that was presented in November, that, you know, the Vavago was focusing on two sites, one in Manchester, Tennessee, and one. And their current complex at Cedarport, that was a competing site. The recommendations were made to the court based upon the following criteria that there was a competing site in Manchester, Tennessee. Capital expenditures fifty to sixty million dollars. New permanent manufacturing jobs between fifty and sixty manufacturing jobs and with the potential of. One hundred temporary construction jobs and the economic impact was, you know, substantial with respect to having those jobs. And the court at that time, back in on the nineteenth of, on the twenty-fourth of November, approved the recommendation for a sixty percent abatement. They have now selected the Cedarport site and they currently have an existing hundred and seventy acre reinvestment zone that was established for their first. Agreement with the county and their intent now is to parcel out approximately twenty-three acres of that reinvestment zone for this project. The economics are essentially the same, fifty to sixty million. It's going to be a two hundred and ten thousand square foot facility with administrative offices and the like. They intend to compound or recycle or remanufacture sixty-five million pounds per year of plastics. They're bringing heels, residuals, not necessarily scrap, but their ability because, you know, they've got a broad customer base today, so they're drawing. Excess polymer from a wide area of Louisiana along the Gulf Coast and they're going to reprocess those polymers into an end product. A subsidiary organization, you know, related to this project, it's the Tulsa project that the court has just recently approved. And so what's happening in Chambers County is an agglomeration of this this plastics industry, not necessarily only to, you know, manufacture and distribute. It's to transform and and the next step is in use manufacturing, you know, where people are going to be taking those plastics and making stuff. And so it's really exciting to see this emerge. Their intent is to begin operations in Q three of twenty twenty-two, and so the request is to enter into it an economic development agreement under chapter three eighty-one. Simply because it's much more efficient to do that, given that the county's already approved. A reinvestment zone, so you don't have to go through the public hearing and the like and present a draft agreement at the next available court. Based upon the approved sixty percent abatement that was approved by the court back in November.
That would be my motion, Judge. Motion by Commissioner Collins, second. For the comment, well, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Go to five point nine, discussing concern of our P eight CPL one Proco LLC tax abatement agreement amendment request.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. P eight CPL one Propco LLC is a subsidiary of Vera. Vera owns the facility that is located at forty-seven twenty-five East Sam Houston Parkway. This building was built and came online in twenty twenty. The court has an existing agreement with Propco or CPL one. It's in the second year of the abatement, the abatement that was approved, that was effective in twenty twenty. And so they're in the second year of their abatement. This is one of the buildings that was impacted by COVID. You know, they, a lot of marketing, our part, their part, a lot of contracts entered into or due diligence involved, but. Because of the emergence and stability associated with vaccines and the like, there's been. Robust activity associated with this building because of its size, particularly with related to e-commerce. And so they have, they're working with Prospect as e-commerce provided very unique entity and they've posed to the court a consideration to to modify their current. Abatement schedule and. There's an example or a recommendation, if you will, that I think has been presented. There are two spreadsheets in the proposal. The idea. Yeah, it illustrates the pre-amendment model, the the impact of the abatement as it currently stands in its second year and and what that would be. At at the end of five years, at the end of ten years, showing that the tax amount that would be abated on a five year contract and how much taxes would be paid. And and noted over in its current form. What's recommended as part of the court's consideration today is to amend the contract. Given that they're competing for this tenant, I will say that there's a competing site or building in Harris County. So these are two buildings, same prospect. And to amend the agreement based upon the post amendment model that's been presented to you, where. The new abatement or the amendment abatement was starting twenty twenty-two at a hundred percent, seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent, sixty, sixty. And shows the net impact of that new schedule, the taxes they would pay and the taxes that would would be abated, essentially very close to a fifty fifty deal. However, the prospects would create a hundred jobs. And I've got some additional information last night, which I can share with you on the spreadsheet. We took a very conservative approach at estimating what the annual inventory would be, so that inventory. Number that you see in that column, the inventory is based upon, is based upon ten million dollars. It's been revised to thirty million based upon some data that I got last evening. And so the annual inventory revenue for hold that constant at thirty million is a hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars per year. And so the end of the ten year or the over the ten year term, with the modification to this seven year adjustment. Would produce one point six million dollars in additional revenue for the for the county. So the net effect of the abatement is is not fifty percent, it's less than that, but I didn't have a chance to include that into consideration. So knowing the the entity. This is a a restaurant supply entity that is an e-commerce provider. And so they're very excited about being in the Houston market and the advent of locating here in Chambers County. The other thing to take into consideration, which I can't model, is because it's an e-commerce entity, sales tax coming into play, which could benefit the hospital, there should be. Chambers, I think it's half cent, right, sales and use tax would be derived, I did get a chance to model that too. So that's a another emerging trend with respect to e-commerce in Chambers County as these e-commerce providers locate what they sell in. The area gets taxed in the area that generates sales tax revenue and more revenue can be derived through that. So that's the framework within which this proposal is being made.
Anybody got any questions or comments for BJ? BJ, in your model, you, I think you put, you added one year upfront with zero percent. And then you added another year at the end with forty percent, correct?
Yes.
All right, you know, honestly, spec building, I really got second thoughts. About whether we should be abatements, you know, just on spec buildings. We do, we do it because we want to get the good tenants in here. I wouldn't be opposed to it knowing we have the tenant, but approving it without having a tenant. I don't know if I could support that.
Yeah, the 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 idea is to, upon consideration, if they can, they want to present these economics to the tenant. And if it flies, it flies and then we have to come back to the court with tenant leasing.
So I could go along with that. It would be approved subject to them getting the e-commerce tenant with the thirty million dollar inventory. That'd be your motion? That would be my motion. Motion by Commissioner Collins, second. Further discussion, if none, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. I guess all you have, BJ? Thank you. I appreciate the effort you've been putting out.
Very much so. You do a great job. We appreciate it.
I will, just for the same justification on project core, site exhibits and the economic impact. Report that I mentioned will be distributed to that, and I know Lauren's going to. Will distribute it for you, so you guys can take a look at how this diffuses through the economy. And so the intent, just to let know that I think that Hospital District has had a special call meeting tomorrow to consider this project. And then a subsequent one, because again, they have to adopt policy and the like. You know, we've worked on behalf of the Trinity Bay Conservation District for them to adopt policy. They've emulated what the county has done, you know, these would be their policies, so they have to be. So they're going to provide the core group with, you know, a the critical path, the timeline and the like, and but this is a great first step moving forward and. You know, there's a definitive cycle time associated with the value limitation on three thirteen, which hopefully will. Be extended for an additional two years because of some challenges in the legislature, but this is, I think they'll embrace what the county's approved today.
So this is, is this kind of our last offer to them? I mean, they base their decision on this right here?
Oh, the 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 whole package, yes. If they come back and say, you know, because again, we're we're still trying to work with, you know, site issues. And Corey's working to get some guidance from DRC. And power, I mean, that that is the ability to get power is is very important, so that is a motivating factor. If in fact, the economics come back and say, well, you know, a little here, a little bit more here, a little less there. And again, the three twelve allows for that. And so I've spoken to Commissioner Gore about one scenario that, you know, deferring the, if in fact their model shows that. You know, deferring the abatement to the highest value over time, you know, over that ten year term. And then the additional five years, change, there's some extra dollars there. And if you recall, when we were negotiating the co-vestral expansion, that's what we, that's what the county looked like. The county looked at, you know, how to forward schedule. The benefit, the benefit, and and they pay taxes on seaweed, on construction work in the process. So there's a balance to 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 be brought to this and and the economics, but this is the best first step from the county's perspective. Ideally, the other taxing entities are going to be able to provide, you know, what their decision, their respective boards decide to do going forward. And kind of do that on a timely basis, hopefully ideally in the next two or three weeks.
Thank you, BJ.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move, I see Eddie and him out there, we're going to move to solid waste eight point one, discuss and consider ordinance creation, a solid waste program and assessment of fees for residents of Chambers County providing. Criminal penalties. Hello, Eddie.
Oh. I learned you know I don't like to be on the spot. Mainly it was just upgrading the the old one that we had. Made a few changes in there. Yes, y'all should have all got it.
I think, I think the only changes we made were, which had been in effect, the the ten dollar permit fee, we changed that, it used to be five. Which we've done quite some time ago, but the policy had never been updated. We added the trailer policy that we discussed the last court, we added that in there and I I think everyone got a copy of this, so. Maybe is there any questions on it?
Anybody got any questions or? I got a couple of comments and I want to thank Commissioner Hammond and Debbie and. Everybody for working on this, I appreciate it. It needed to be done, but on the page one of five, which is on our package page. Two twenty-nine and it's got to do with the penalties. It says the court finds that any person disposing of solid waste at Chambers County. disposal facility without a required waste permit should be assessed to find. I think that should be either will be assessed to find or. Shall be assessed to find. Instead of should.
I missed that.
Okay, I was just, your tipping fee of twenty-five cents, is that exactly what we're charging right now?
That's actually point two five cents.
Yeah, okay, point zero two five, that's right.
Yes, yes, sir.
And you put in here eighteen foot trailers or less. I just, I know one guy that lives right over in RWJ, right up from the dump, he's got a twenty foot trailer. So that would ban him from being able to use his trailer. How do you feel about making that blocked off at twenty and I realize you got problems with that. It's not a big deal, that just came up. Want to get your take on it?
Well, only thing is, you know, when you go from a sixteen to a twenty, it just, they start getting a little bigger and bigger and bigger. Before you know it, we're going to have gooseneck trailers come through there with twenty-four foot and they're only going to say they got ten foot of material on there. And they take ten foot of that trailer and they stack it up six foot tall, might as well just load the whole trailer. Because they're going to be there at the ramp that much longer trying to unload.
Don't take it you don't like it.
No, well, I give you a good example. On Saturday, we had a man pull up there and he was on the ramp at Beach City for almost twenty-five, thirty minutes. And he unloaded just partial of it and he was tired. He was going to sit down where you got them lined up all the way down the street. So they opened the other side and next the guy beside him, he's sitting there with a ten foot trailer that was loaded to the hill. So you got two trailers on the ramp and traffic's packed up. And then you start getting the phone calls, well, I don't know if y'all did, but I got plenty of people complaining that they were sitting in line for forty-five minutes. There's nothing I can do about it.
I hear you. You know, we got two, we got two box sites on the west side for seventy-five percent of population and we are overcrowded.
Saturdays, we have two trucks, maybe three running. And they just, I mean, by two thirty, three o'clock, everybody sits there and waits till three o'clock, knowing the landfill's closed. They won't send them to the landfill and then they flood and the boxes are filling up. Yes.
Well, it is, it's not going to get better, you know, we've got a lot of people. Need extra box sites.
Truthfully, I'd like to ask the court to say like on Saturdays, we don't take any trailers after, on Saturday after, say, eleven o'clock. And that gives the trucks time to turn around and dump the boxes for the residents with smaller loads, but. Really don't know how to. But I really don't know how to approach it right now.
When we get the new site, would you be able to designate, since it'll have more ramps that the
You're going to have the same problem.
Then designate one of them just as trailers on, since they have additional ramps.
Yeah, but you take one trailer and it fills up the box. You still have to wait for that truck to come back to move that box out, put a box in there for them to dump.
Everybody had a trailer and they realized that they were, you know, you're holding up another guy with a trailer, and they're all punishing each other, but the rest of them will approve.
And they still got to haul them too, you know, them other boxes as they fill.
Well, we, we really need to address this during budgeting and get him more help on the weekends to swap those boxes out. We really do. Because, I mean, you know, we got two, we got two spots there, and yeah, they're busy. You know, Beach City's not as busy as Mount Bellevue, but it's busy.
Well, the thing you run into too, like you said, get more people or more trucks. But it, it still takes you that long to haul one box from Beach City.
I understand, but if you can run another truck, it definitely helps.
Right, right.
And two, you got to consider too, you know, like on the bridge, if there's an accident or anything, the trucks are, are down. They got to go all the way through Liberty and come back around. And half the time, they don't give them two loads out of, say, Mount Bellevue, because they having to go all the way around.
It's one of the only wrecks on the bridge on the weekend.
If you can accomplish that, we deeply appreciate that.
Does anybody else have any comments or anything?
I'm good with it, once you.
I think, I think the only thing that caught my eye, I'm just looking for it, I can't remember what it said, is, and I know Eddie knows what I'm talking about, is out county people that own homes down here. My only deal with that is, I mean, they're paying full tax, they're not getting any homestead on that. And then, I mean, they're paying full tax. And, I mean, if they're from wherever and they get garbage at their houses down here, and they want to dispose of it before they leave.
Well, they can get a temporary permit to do that with it.
Yeah, they're for thirty days.
But the problem is, is they come in, they have one vehicle, they get a sticker, then they come back with another vehicle, before you know it, that same family's got four stickers, they don't live, and they only own one house. And believe me, I've caught them numerous, coming from Baytown, Liberty, loaded to the hill, coming right here to our box sites.
The solution is temporary.
Temporary is the best way. And, and you can give it to them for free, I mean, as far as that goes. If they own property here, so you don't have to pay, you know, for that temporary, but it's only good for thirty days. And
And it's not, it's not that we want them not to, their trash that they generate here sure can come out here, but what we're trying to avoid is them bringing their trash from other counties. Or if they have a business here and they want to get rid of their business trash for free, and they sneak into the box sites, that, that's what we're trying to alleviate with the non-residents, you know.
Are we changing the colors of our, our contractor and our temporary permits?
Contractors can't get a sticker. It's
No, not a sticker, I'm talking about permit for hauling for other, for residents.
We put a box on it.
That's a, that's a temporary.
Temporary.
Yeah.
And then we have a box.
And it has the person's name on it.
And we stamp it showing that it's like, they're residents here, or they're not resident, they just own property here, you know.
And we shouldn't cloud this ordinance. This ordinance is for the benefit of the residents of Chambers County.
Yes.
Not everybody else, the residents, so.
It's Seattle.
And we need to keep that in mind. Every time we discuss this, we need to, we need to keep that in mind, it is for the residents of Chambers County. So this thing cost us a ton of money to operate, so.
And I understand, there's a lot of people that own property here, that don't live here. Because, matter of fact, before I moved here, that we had property here, and we lived in Harris County. I mean, I never brought my trash over here, but we still own the property over there. And, but my deal is, is they don't live here, they live somewhere else, they're paying somebody else to throw their trash away, but they don't live here. They're in Harris County or Katy or wherever, they're paying to get rid of their trash. And when they came here, they're either got it, rent houses, or they're, you know, something, it's not. Some of them have weekend houses where they come down there. And, and I tell them every time when I talk to them, I don't have a problem, like at Smith Point and stuff. If it's coming from, generating from that house over that weekend, there's no problem walking in and throwing it away. Because, I mean, that's just common courtesy, you got it. But if they come in here with a trailer loaded trash, we have a problem.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Entertaining motion?
Make motion, we accept the ordinance for solid waste program.
Mr. Hammond, second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Tice, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back up to seven point one. Maintenance building, discuss, consider approving PPK Architect, providing architectural and engineer services for design of new county complex off of Chambers Parkway that will include a community building, baseball and softball complex and site design. Who wants to handle that?
I'll take it.
Okay.
You know, this is one we talked about last week. And so what we want to do is to hire an architect, basically to design the ball fields, but we need to do the layout of the facility at the same time, so we see how it fit on there. And we want to start doing a community building for that area. There's ten community buildings in Chambers County, and we got three on the west side of the river. And that particular area doesn't have one anywhere. It had, even McCloud Park, which was the closest, i- is going to be relocated. So we need a community building there. So this just gets the design and the engineering together.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Hold on one second. So you said three?
He made a motion.
Oh, did he make a motion?
Yeah, he did, he made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Dan.
Tice, okay. Tom.
All right. So I didn't, uh, I might be missing something. So we have McCloud Park in Cove.
In Beach City.
In Beach City, okay. Yeah, because I was thinking of one on one forty-six, doesn't it?
No, it's just
Judge kind of took it.
No, it's not, okay. It used to be a community building, but not in probably ten years.
With hoping in election.
Right. So does this include the design of the community building also?
Yes.
Or is this, this part now?
Funny for this, it's coming from
That's a good question. Uh, we get to add this on the project, budget. I talked to the judge last week about it a little bit. Since, you know, we have the three-one money designated for roads, and we're going to do some, we put that in CO. So my suggestion would be three-to-one money, that's the roads, they transfer to the CO, use that money to pay for the design project. I don't really have any other.
Okay, so we, do I don't like to transfer?
No, no, he's already budgeted it. Yes, yes, sir, for, for this year. That was my only real suggestion, to have to pay for the design of this project.
Okay, we don't know how much it's going to be.
The, um, design project?
To design this.
Um, so last court
He said two hundred thousand, I think.
Yeah, PPK is about two hundred thousand, because they already designed the west side complex, so they would do a four percent effect B versus six, so it's about probably two hundred thousand.
And I don't think it's payments until it's constructed, right?
I'm not sure about that, but I can confirm.
Yeah. And also, didn't mention, I had conversations with the city of Baytown. And the mayor and the city manager are very much in favor of doing a joint venture and fifty-fifty joint venture on the ballparks. So they've got to run it through city council, but we really expect to have a JV on that.
Okay, that's great. And I know we've been in contact with Jefferson County on the same thing, and they're putting something on their court to discuss and consider. I mean, we hadn't gotten a firm back from them yet.
Well, same with the mayor, I mean, he can't commit, uh, city council, but he's very much in favor of it.
That's great.
So it kind, it kind of leading me to my question on the community building. I was talking to Mike. So if we mirror, basically, the west side complex, about four percent would apply. So if we do something different with a community building, which I'm in favor of building the same thing, so we have another shelter, basically. But if we change the design of the community building, then that portion of it would go to six percent. So.
I think we're still got a lot of discussion to do on the community building. Community building could go on that same thirty acres, or it could sit, it could be set on the land where the Cedar Valley building is. I mean, you know, it's possible. I think that's something I really want to visit with the architect about, and maybe bring it back to court again. You know, look at location, what we want to do with it.
Go ahead.
Because there's not money in the CO building.
No.
We got to get funding. I just want to start looking at it and get ready, because we need, we need to be working on it. We need to know what it's going to cost, you know, and start working in that direction so we can get funding for it and do it.
You mean on one forty-six, that's a Cedar Valley building?
Yeah, I mean, it's possible it could go there, it could go into thirty acres.
That, that road just, that traffic's horrible there. If we could put it somewhere else, it'd probably make it a lot easier on
It is, but, yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm okay with it. Okay.
Billy working on suspended over by this.
We got a motion in a second.
Sure. I will.
All right. Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
All right.
Now his motion carries. We are done with everything on the agenda there, down to the consent. We'll start with Commissioner Combs, is anything you would like to discuss and consider again?
I need to tap on it here, obviously.
I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, I think a couple of things. On the item number ten, on the page Okay, four thirty-seven on our agenda packet, and we get there. Wait a minute, that can't be. Oh, I'm on the wrong item here, give me a minute.
Take your time.
You jumped down there quick, I wasn't ready for you.
You want me to go to Commissioner?
No, give me just a minute, I'm slow, but I'll
Oh, you take your time, take your time.
Four thirty-seven. Okay, this is the terms and the obligations. I'm looking at the term on it, and we, this, we're actually just renewing the agreement.
Yes.
But we didn't change the term. We still got it commencing on September first of twenty fifteen and ending on thirty-first of August of twenty sixteen. We didn't change that.
We need to make note to change that.
All right. And Okay, now we've already addressed, oh, yeah, the item number eight. Anawak National Bank sponsored fireworks show for the use of counties for, at Fort Anawak. Do they have to get a park use permit to do that?
No, I, I don't think they've ever had.
Have they done it before?
Okay. I don't think so, okay. Hey, on that, on that
And that date is wrong on the agenda, so let me just click that note. It says on Wednesday night, July the fourth, and July the fourth is not on a Wednesday night. So just for the record, so there's clarity.
Really, that date on that other one should be twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Uh, yeah, well, I would like to verify what the date really should be, I don't know.
That's where I'm from.
Yeah.
And to check.
I would, I would think it's going to be twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two, I don't know.
And that was page one to twenty, four thirty?
That was on page four thirty-seven. It repeats again on page four thirty-nine, so it's in there more than once. I just think, you know, maybe Ashley, look at that, get it corrected. Thank you. And that's all I got.
Just one quick question for Corey. On number twenty-three, the RWJ project truck culvert safety ends.
Yes, sir.
I didn't understand what that was. Meant to ask you yesterday, I was got.
That's all right. So we're trying to get wording a little more and more improved here. Second language to me, but safety ends, or if you, if you drive down a text dot road, you will see a sloped concrete pipe on any cross culvert. And so they're six to one on a driveway, four to one on roadside type stuff. So essentially, that's the general concept of what we're trying to gain here, except for the fact that, well, let me just, I guess, go back to a little bit of the detail of what, what's occurred here. So we, LJA was constructing this project for the county under grant. And essentially, they, they had to end the job early before they were technically complete with everything, so that we didn't miss out on the grant funds. So they left the job basically unfinished somewhat. The residents out there are unhappy with the final product. They feel that there's a safety issue with those ends being blunt. That's an area that, you know, that, that ditch wasn't there prior. And so, you know, we cut the ditch, it helps the citizens overall for drainage. But now they have, you know, a ditch there with cross culverts, which if a, if a plane runs off of that airstrip, you know, they can end up hitting that and causing an issue. So, yeah, I think it's been in Billy's craw for quite some time, trying to, trying to find a solution. We, we have looked, I mean, going to a, a heavy SET, we looked at trying to do it in-house. I mean, it's just a lot of work and it's, it's pretty expensive. It's amazing how much those, you know, those items cost. So we're, we went out there, met with the citizens, and I think we've got a good plan to kind of retrofit something in there that will provide some safety and lessen the cost somewhat. So that's what I'm asking.
Okay. Yeah, the ditch parallel is a runway, and if a plane just happens to slide off of that runway, certainly somebody get killed.
Right, okay. Uh, I believe that was all I had for the agenda. For the
Hey, Corey, I had a couple of things I wanted to ask you.
Yes, sir.
The number twenty-two, the approved advertising was still bid for Beatle Point, two-inch asphalt overlay as part of the Beatle Point realignment.
Yes, sir. So on that project, that is the realignment that we've, that's taken longer than we desired to get that straightened out. I mean, the ultimate benefit will be that we get a two-way roadway that essentially affronts, even though it's offset somewhat to ninety-nine, and bypass the toll along that corridor between one forty-six, crossing essentially Chambers Parkway, Kilgore Parkway, all the way down to five sixty-five. The contractor in our agreement, we did a land swap, they're taking care of the drainage cut across. They're realigning the roadway, they're doing the construction of the dirt work and bringing in the base, so subgrade treatment, base work, all the drainage culverts, all that stuff. The county has agreed as part of that agreement to do the surfacing on it. You know, I've been waiting until we got essentially near the end of the project. We're not right there yet, but we're at least within, you know, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, I guess. And so it's the appropriate time to go ahead and bid that out and, and, and be ready for the contractor to complete that as soon as HBP finishes its work.
Okay. And that's already in your budget to do.
Yes.
The, the approved advertising for Silvius County full-depth payment-based project in various county roads, what, what exactly is that there, what you
Okay, so we've got some areas where we've got some pretty deep base failures. And, I mean, so really, I, you know, we've had a little bit of discussion here. It's just, text up sees the same issue, but, you know, after, you know, we've had years and years of pretty, you know, sufficient weather, I guess, average weather. But the last six years with, you know, the amount of rainfall we've had, you know, our, our average rainfall is essentially sixty inches a year. I believe, looking back over the last ten years, we've had five years that exceeded a hundred year, a hundred inches in a year. You know, and some of those pretty significant, as everybody can attest here, we had water sitting, especially on the east side, for long periods of time. Some of that, some of that rushing water and damage shows up immediately, but other of it, other damage shows up over time. And so that's the concern. So the work, the roadway conditions have declined, especially then last year, COVID and everything else. We just weren't able to get to some of that And so that's the concern, uh, so the work, the roadway conditions have declined, uh, especially then last year, COVID, and everything else, we just weren't able to get to some of that stuff. So this is, uh, this allowed the contractor, a contractor come in here, mill out, milling his machine that goes down, breaks up the material, they scrape out a portion of that material and put an asphalt, uh, layer in there about six inches deep, which strengthens that, and then, so you just fix the worst areas where you have base failures, um, which is worse than potholes, I, I don't know exactly how to describe it to, in layman's terms, but, uh, anyway, it should fix those, and then we come back and, and, and cover that with an asphaltic product over it to, to bridge over it. So hopefully, this kind of supplementing the work that the crew's already doing will help extend and, and buy us some time, uh, before longer repairs are needed.
Okay, you'll have a list of the roads?
Uh, well, one that jumps to mind immediately is, uh, Katie's Creek area, uh, it's been some pretty significant, uh, issues in there.
And I know, I know you and I discussed it before, that's what agitated me a little bit about FEMA and them, because with all the rainfall and everything like that, and you know, I've asked you several times, is there funding out there for that? And you know it's because of the weather and the rain that's set on these roads, but there's no funding mechanism to get anything for it.
You know, we had engineers that even came to us, it said they had been successful in, in trying to show that, uh, over time, uh, even for text dot roads, and showing that that's gonna occur. But it's, it's very difficult, especially at the county level, because you, you've got to go back and show, I mean, the records, I mean, we're getting picked apart on things that happened even now, back in Harvey, and, you know, and, and even back to Ike on some things. And it's just, you're taking a large risk, because the amount of money that goes up front to, to repair those things, and then with the opportunity to come back later. And, you know, I know we've talked a lot about, uh, what to do with our gravel roads, and, uh,
Oh, my phone could ring, no?
They, like, I mean, when it's wet, I mean, they just, uh, the, the, the amount of weight that we have on these roadways now compared to what it was, say, twenty years ago, is just, I mean, Chambers County is growing, and, uh, you know, we've talked, we're talking about infrastructure, talking about extending, but, you know, we, we're gonna have to, uh, you know, continue to improve, uh, the quality of some of these areas where we've got, you know, where farm, old farm, rice farms, all that stuff is growing into, um, residential areas. And, uh, the expectation of the, of the public in the county is continuing to increase. So you've got stuff on the east side where gravel roads are gonna have to turn into chip seal roads, uh, initially, and you got stuff on the, uh, west side where, you know, kind of our low-volume type, uh, asphalt roads, even though they're much better than surrounding counties, uh, when it comes to, you know, like I said, if some of our residents would drive into Liberty a little bit here and there, then they might feel better, but still, the expectation there as well is that, uh, that, that they're gonna look more like text dot roadways. And so I think the, you know, the court's got a real challenge, uh, you know, going forward on how to, how to address those things, so.
I appreciate that. Anybody else got anything?
No. So they just fixed county line road in Liberty County after, I lived out there over thirty years ago. This is the first time they've actually been there and fixed the road, so.
Waiting for you to go. Anything of motion with the corrections that Commissioner Combs stated?
I've got a motion to approve the consent agenda has changed.
Motion made by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tice. Any more discussion, all in favor?
Uh.
And opposed, motion carries. We're down to
One and two. One point one, one point two.
Yes. Did we ever get Mary Beth, that you want to do an update? Okay. Um, legislative update, this Halton, you have anything?
We're down to six days.
Six days?
That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
I don't blame you. Okay, on executive session, I know I spoke wrong, he didn't, he wanted to discuss in executive session, so we will take, um, executive session, item executive session may include, but item two, applicable section under the Texas government code, personnel section five-five-one point zero seven four or two, consultation with attorney section five-five-one point zero seven one, and deliber, deliber deliberation, can we get my tongue wrapped around it, regarding real property section five-five-one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits. We'll take twenty point one, discuss and consider personal issues to executive session. I'll just mention the item twenty point two, discuss and consider rescinding commissioner's court item approved upon the director of the human resource request pertaining payroll, July seventeenth, twenty twenty, dash nineteen point two eight, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, dash eighteen point three, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, eighteen point one, and eighteen point two, February ninth, twenty twenty-one, dash nineteen thirty-two, executive session. We will recess from executive session, I mean, from the regular session accord at twelve twenty-one. We will take a five-minute recess and reconvene in executive session at twelve twenty-six.